Good morning. Thank you, Senator. Appreciate that. Continuous stream of encouragement. The hour of convening has arrived on this glorious Friday morning. I ask that all unauthorized persons exit our chamber. It's my honor to recognize the Rules Chairman from Chickamauga.
Thank you, Mr. President, from Chickamauga. And I'm not going to tell you what it means, but it's an honor to be here. And thank you for your leadership in this special session. That hopefully today will be the last day in the Senate, but you just never know. Today, according to the Senator from the 56th, it's National Play Monopoly Day, which he likes to do by himself sometimes. It's also, according to the Senator from the 7th, it's National John Bullock Wager Jeans today. So it's just a great day to commemorate so many fine people. And, Mr. President, under your leadership and toilage, the Journal's been read and found to be correct.
I'm waiting. Don't you normally have like daily facts or something like that? Did you forget to write anything down today? Can you use the microphone?
There is nothing about Georgia on my daily fact list, so I had to make it up. Other than that, it's good.
That's so unusual for you. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them forward to the Secretary's desk at this time. Mr. Secretary, will you please read House bills and resolutions for the first time?
House Bill 11 EX by Representative Anderson of the 10th and others. A bill to be entitled an act to authorize the city of Cornelia, Georgia to exercise all redevelopment and other powers under Article 11, Section 2, Paragraph 7B of the Georgia Constitution in Chapter 44 of Title 36 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated, the redevelopment powers law as amended and for other purposes.
State and local government.
That completes the order, Mr. President.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read reports of standing committees?
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Rules has had under consideration following legislation. It has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. SR 33 EX due pass by substitute respectfully submitted. Senator Mullis of the 53rd District, Chairman. That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read bills and resolutions for the second time?
Senate Resolution 33 EX by Senator Harbison of the 15th. Do both Minister Edward O. recognize? That completes the order.
All right, it's now time for a morning roll call. It is now time for a morning roll call. Are there any motions to excuse? The Chair recognizes the majority whip.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senators from the 1st and the 3rd.
Without objection, the Senators from the 1st and the 3rd are excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 33rd.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, y'all. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 38th for business outside the Capitol.
Without objection, the Senator from the 38th is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 27th.
Good morning, Mr. President. I ask unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 28th.
Without objection, the Senator from the 28th is excused. The Chair recognizes the Senator from the 4th. He waves. Let me introduce you to the Senator from the 19th. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 40th.
Good morning, Mr. President. I ask for your unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 55th.
Without objection, the Senator from the 55th is excused. Are there any additional motions to excuse? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 13th.
Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the Senator from the 12th, please.
Without objection, the Senator from the 12th is excused. Better late than never. The Secretary will call the roll of Senators. Signify your presence by voting the a switch. Secretary will unlock the machine. All right, it's now time for our morning devotional. And I ask that all Senators take your seats. Seats all out of all audible conversations. And I ask our doorkeepers to secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to recognize the Senator from the 33rd to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and to introduce to us our Chaplain of the Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's stand for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with whose liberty and justice we'll strive. Now the Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to Georgia flag, to the principle for which it stands, wisdom, justice, tolerance, and liberty. Good morning, Mr. President, my fellow Senators, colleagues, friends, and y'all. I gotta get out my dollar store glasses here. I went to the eye doctor, and he offered, he said I had to pay $500 for a pair of glasses. So I walked across the street to the dollar store and brought 10 for $10. But that's what I want to hear for today. Today, I'm here to introduce Jeremy Abenathie, who is the founding partner of the law firm Abenathie, Ditzel, Hendricks, and Bryce LLC, located in Mayretta, Georgia, y'all. For his stellar courtroom advocacy, Jeremy was recognized by Georgia Trend as a legally elite attorney in 2013 and a super lawyer in the area of family law in 2015 through 2021. A super lawyer is voted by their peers as the top 2.5% of lawyers in the area of law they practice. Jeremy was also recently appointed as the first African-American judge in Woodstock, Georgia, Cherokee County Municipal Court. Jeremy also serves his community as the senior pastor of Noonday Missionary Baptist Church in Mayretta, Georgia, a church founded in 1888. He also serves as the Governance Chair of Mus Ministry, a nonprofit organization in Cobb County. He also serves on the Board of Trustees, as a Board of Trustee for Mount Perrin Christian School. Jeremy is a member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, and he and his wife Tiffany have three daughters, Havelin, Kendall, and Emery. Pastor Jeremy is a wise person cut from the same cloth as Solomon. I remember one time an elderly lady had problem passing gas in silence during this church ceremony. She asked him for his advice, and he said, "Maybe you should get some new batteries for your hearing aid." And now I present past that happen.
Well, God bless, and and good morning. Thank you, Senator Dockert, for that wonderful introduction. And to the Lieutenant Governor, thank you very much. To all the distinguished Senators that are here, present today, thank you so much for the opportunity to allow me to share this morning. Also, to my lovely wife Tiffany, thank you for being here with me today. And to my oldest daughter Havelin, who is a freshman at Georgia State. She plays softball there. And my other two daughters are not able to be here this morning. My middle daughter, she is actually en route to Macon as she is preparing to compete in the competition Cheerleading State Championship on tomorrow. Hopefully, they can pull it off, and if so, that will be their 10th state championship in a row. A wonderful feat. And to my youngest daughter, who's not here, she's not here because she had a French test this morning. And I told her last night, I said, "Emery, are you gonna come and watch Dad tomorrow? I'll be at the state Capitol." And she responded, "Au contraire, mon frère." Tuition dollars at work there. I trust that you all are filled with anticipation about Thanksgiving Day, which is right on the horizon. In less than seven days, I absolutely cannot wait to be the first to tear off a drumstick from the fried turkey that my father-in-law will present. I can already hear and see my father stirring the gumbo pot as he is preparing the gumbo to perfection. I can also see the eyes of the cooks as they watch and wait for nods of affirmation from all of those that will be eating the macaroni and cheese, the green bean casserole, and the cornbread. I'm looking forward to spending time with friends and family as we watch a full slate of sports on TV. Perhaps I'm not looking forward to some of the guests that will overstay their welcome. But certainly, Thanksgiving Day is a time of family, a time of fellowship, and of course, great food. But I would encourage us all today to not just celebrate Thanksgiving on one day or during one particular season, but in each and every day to find those apparent reasons that we all have to offer thanks. I recall in Luke's Gospel, Chapter 17, it's there where Jesus encounters ten lepers who are quarantined because of their hopeless condition. Jesus encounters the lepers, and there he stops, he speaks to them. He tells them to go and show themselves to the priests. They, as they went to go and show themselves to the priests, the Bible tells us there that they were healed. Nine of these ten lepers, they rushed back into the throes of society. And only one leper, only one, returned to give thanks. I presume that the one leper that returned to give thanks knew that the reason why his transformation happened was because of the amazing grace of God. And for that reason alone, he wanted to ensure that he gave gratitude to Jesus. The amazing grace is that great soul-stirring hymn written by John Newton. We know that Newton had his share of life tragedies. I found that Newton's mother died when he was six years of age. Newton also was able to barely escape death as he was caught in the middle of a storm. Newton also made a terrible decision to become a slave trader. And later on, Newton, we learned, he became deathly ill. Well, Newton recovered. Newton repented. And Newton knew that his change, his transformation, that it was only by the amazing grace of God. I challenge us here today to take those lyrics and apply them to our walk and find those reasons to show gratitude and show thankfulness to a great and merciful and gracious God. If you would, please join me in prayer. Most gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love, we thank you for your mercy, and we thank you for your amazing grace. We thank you for your amazing grace, that is the source of every good gift that you have bestowed upon us. In appreciation of that amazing grace, Lord, I pray that we would discharge our duties in a very diligent and dedicated fashion, honoring you and bringing glory to you. Father, I pray for this great body of leaders. I pray for their families. I pray for everything that their hands touch. And we give you all the glory because indeed, you are amazing. In your name, the name above all names, we pray, amen. Thank you very much.
Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The Chair sees none. Does any Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
I was telling our pastor of the day that the story of the lepers was actually part of my reflection this morning. So it's hit me twice in one morning. So there must be a message that I'm really, really supposed to be paying attention to there. But one of the things that the thankfulness that I wanted to bring out is all those people that work for us, our office staff, all those people that keep us straight, that take care of our constituents when we're not there. I'll keep talking. All those people that take care of us, that enable us to come out here on the floor and do this work here, I am thankful every day for them. But I'm especially thankful for two that we have in our suite. The Assistant to our Distinguished Appropriations Chair, Kathleen, had her birthday yesterday. Tomorrow, my Chief of Staff has his birthday. So I just wanted to So I just wanted to get up and publicly thank both of them, wish them a happy birthday and tell them how much they mean to us. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 39th for a point of personal privilege.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, and hello to my Senate colleagues. Georgia has a problem. It is a problem that extends from the core of Atlanta to the outskirts of Clinch County. It's a problem in urban, suburban, ex-urban, and rural areas alike. It's one that's been discussed in the news, in this chamber, and at dinner tables across the state and throughout the city. And that problem is crime. Homicides, aggravated assaults, carjackings, burglaries, the list goes on. Perhaps my constituents are feeling it more than most. Over the next 11 days, Atlantans will go to the polls again to elect their choice for the 61st mayor of Atlanta. I have no doubt that the mayor-elect, he or she, will be thoughtful in confronting and tackling all issues. I have no doubt that they will strive to improve this great city I've called home for the past 23 years. Both mayoral candidates have been forthright in sharing their ideas and plans for improving public safety. And I assure you, whomever the people of Atlanta choose, those of us in the City of Atlanta delegation will be part of the effort to push the administration on important issues as well as strengthen and deepen the relationship between the city and the state. As a matter of fact, plans are already in place for a meeting with the mayor-elect within days after the election. But today I rise, and the good senator from the 6th will follow, to call on both mayoral candidates to agree to a few specific measures, actions to begin to take on day one to make our city safer. The first measure should be to open the Atlanta City Detention Center to full capacity. Listen, it is open now. It is being used in narrow ways. We need to expand that. There are beds there that can and must be utilized. Just last week, it was announced that part of the facility will be used as a diversion and mental health center, and that's a good start. Let me be clear, not everyone needs to be arrested, booked, and incarcerated. But we also cannot allow serial offenders to continue making our residents unsafe. Investments must be made in hiring the necessary staff to get the detention center running again. We must send a clear message that Atlanta will not be the playground for criminals. The second measure should be to commit to adopting police-based programs that seek to respond more effectively to incidents involving the mentally ill. We know that so much of what is happening is due to psychosis, people who are on drugs, people who actually need help. And jail and our emergency rooms are not the place for them to get that. Officers in this type of program should be trained by mental health professionals in the complex dynamics of mental illness and techniques for de-escalating confrontations. They must focus on partnering with local mental health providers to match mentally ill individuals with local providers. We need a commitment to adopting a program of 24/7 mental health support and care in our jail. The third measure is equally important to breaking the cycle of crime. The city must create and provide more opportunities for our vulnerable young people so they are not drawn into a life of crime. We must expand the at-promise youth center system, open up our rec centers, and develop specific initiatives to expand the minds and the talents of our young people. The people of Atlanta are demanding action, and it is on their behalf that I rise today. I love my city. I know that by working and holding each other accountable, we can once again have the safe streets and vibrant neighborhoods. This is not just a dream or a wish. It will be our reality, and I'll work every moment of every day to achieve success. I am urging both candidates to take our call and allow us to work hand in hand with you to improve the public safety in our city as soon as you are elected. Thank you, and I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 6th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I woke up yesterday to headlines that two young men, 17 and 18-year-old high school students, had been detained on suspicion of murder of a 24-year-old grad student. You may be thinking to yourself, wow, City of Atlanta, again. But this was in Alpharetta. The district of a particular senator who seems to be more focused on my district than his own. And it brought home the point to me in something that I think all of us in this chamber should know or should think about, is that we have a public safety issue. We have a crime issue. We have a gun issue. We have too many guns on the street. But it's not a City of Atlanta issue, as I said. It's one that affects every part of this state. Every state in this union. And while it's a national and statewide problem, it's also a problem that demands local leadership, just like the senator from the 39th said. And when I speak to my constituents, they tell me they feel ignored. They feel unheard by city officials in Atlanta. It feels like the City of Atlanta is not open for business, right? Things aren't getting done. And that means everything. It's not even a public safety thing as much as it's, you know, zoning issues or code violations, all the stuff that has to happen in a very complex city to make it work. On November 30th, Atlantans will elect a new mayor. It's either going to be City Council President Felicia Moore or Councilman Andre Dickens. But it's crucial, it's so crucial, that each of them recognize the seriousness of the issues before them. And I think they know that. I think they know how serious things are with respect to the city, but also with respect to the state. But one thing that I want to talk about particularly in terms of solutions is just, I want us to focus on how interconnected our public safety system is with our system of justice, right? Because I hear we need more police on the streets. Well, guess what? We don't have the beds for folks to be detained in, in terms of the jails. Then I hear, well, you know, what about more laws, more crimes? We can't even handle what we have right now. And it's all coming from the pandemic, right? It's a backlog from being shut down for so long. So a few of the things that I would really like to see happen almost immediately. I would like for the City of Atlanta to commit to giving funds to the Fulton County District Attorney's Office to help with the backlog to clear it, right? I mean, we're talking about a two- or three-year backlog. And so until we can clear those, it's just going to continue to build up and people are continuing to have issues in terms of public safety. I also call on them to look into what Cobb County is doing. Cobb County has now, is now going to provide 24/7 mental health care in their jails. 24/7. They are our model for the rest of this state. And Sheriff Craig Owens, he should be applauded for that. He saw a problem, and he's trying to solve it, right? And that's what we're supposed to do as leaders. It's not just about talking about problems and jumping up and down about it. It's about actually sitting down, getting in the room, being adults, and trying to solve it. And sometimes we're wrong, right? But we've got to give each other some grace, too. Because nobody has the answer. There's no one silver bullet to this. But just because there's not a silver bullet or we don't know exactly what is going to work, doesn't mean that we just can throw up our hands and say, well, we may just need to ride this out. That's untenable. The City of Atlanta deserves better. My constituents deserve better. The state deserves better. This city is too important. It's too important. And so for everybody who can vote, please do. Be mindful. Look at the candidates. And then with respect to the candidates, we look forward to working with you to move this city forward and to deal with the very significant issues that we have before us. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 20th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to publicly thank my legislative assistant, Ryan Miller. She's been working with me for two years and has done an outstanding job, been my real right hand. And she is taking a position with the Georgia Hospital Association and will be leaving us in the leadership suite, but we'll still see her at the Capitol. So thank you, Ryan, for your great service to my constituents in the state of Georgia and to the Senate. On a more somber note, earlier this week on Tuesday, former mayor of Perry, Jimmy Faircloth, James E. Faircloth Jr., he was 60 years old and he died in a motorcycle accident Tuesday. He was an outstanding mayor. He gave a lot to the community and to the City of Perry, and the City of Perry made great progress under his leadership. He was also my former Sunday School teacher and was real inspirational and active in our church, active in our school. So I would ask the Senate to please join me in a moment of silence as we remember and pray for the Faircloth family.
Senators asked for us all to rise for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Amen.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 56th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to first wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving if we don't get to see each other before. Very excited to hear others talking about the crime issue we have in Atlanta throughout the state. That's a very positive sign, and we all need to be working together. I appreciate the senator from the 6th is running for higher office and likes to get a jab in here. But the reality is, is you know what happened last year? Atlanta had more murders per capita than the City of Chicago. Let that sink in for a moment. More murders per capita than the City of Chicago. We can do better, and we must do better. And part of that is what I've said many times. We have a jail that is mostly empty in the City of Atlanta. And we have overcrowding, and violent felons will be let out because of politics. These are things that can be solved immediately. So I'm asking people to stop talking and start working together. We have held a series of meetings. We brought all the interested parties in together. And we've worked in good faith to solve problems. That's what we'll continue to do. But we can, and we must do better. So stop playing politics and start focusing on the future, because Georgians deserve better. Thank you. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the rules chairman for a point of personal privilege.
Well, I find myself honoring Josh McCune by being in well today. And I want to thank you, Mr. President, again for your leadership of this great body and state. I'm here simply today to remind you of the wonderful life we have working with each other and to wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Now, a few weeks ago, I had 28 wild turkey in my yard. I haven't seen those wild turkeys in two weeks since it's Thanksgiving coming up. You think there's a connection there? Well, but look, Thanksgiving is for family and friends, and I hope you have a great one with yours. And that's all I have to say. So I wish you a happy Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas after that, and look forward to serving with you again in January. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Thank you for those kind, warming words. Chair recognizes the senator from the 9th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President, and happy Friday, everyone. So I rise today to brag a little bit about my kids, because, you know, I am that mom. So I am a mom of two wonderful young people that are starting their journey into adulthood. My daughter, Imani, turned 20 this year. I cannot believe it. Where did the time go? She is studying biology at Georgia State University, and she is a straight A student, and she makes me proud every day. My son Noah, he will be 19 this year. And he graduated high school this year, and he is off at Georgia Tech. And he plays football for Georgia Tech. He is a freshman. And as we speak, they are probably heading to South Bend to play Notre Dame. And I always like to call him, you know, before they have these travel trips and give my little rah-rah speech before he leaves. So I called him last night, and you know, it's a challenge being a student athlete. And he's been managing it very well. You know, he stumbles a little, but, you know, we call him and lift him back up. But I called him last night. It was 10 o'clock. I was like, Noah, what you doing? Mom just got back from study hall. So he had, you know, he gets out of class at 3:00, and he is in study hall until about 10:00 o'clock on a lot of days. And then he has to get right back up, and they're probably getting on a plane to go play. But I am very proud of him, and I want you guys to look for him out there. He's a freshman. They put him in sometimes and sometimes not, but he has been playing this year. I'm going to give you his number. So Noah Collins is his last name. He is number 43, and he plays defensive end. So you guys look for him, and I'm only saying this because when our young people are doing good things, we should lift them up. And we know Tech has had some challenges in their games this year. And we come from Grayson, you guys. We are state champs at Grayson, and we are not used to this losing thing. So I just have to keep him lifted, and I ask that you guys do, too. And anyway, I thank you. You guys enjoy your Thanksgiving. I yield the well.
That's a very inspiring message, and tell your son Noah, I spent many hours in those same study hall rooms on the top of the Athletic Association building, and I hope he does better than I did. Chair recognizes the senator from the 19th for a point of personal privilege. And you're not allowed to mention anything about Georgia Tech football.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't. I think the senator from the 9th said everything I would have said anyway. So, particularly about records, but on a more pointed, more important point. Thank you so much for, senators, for your outpouring of help yesterday as we talked again about the foster children in our state's custody. How we've been able to reduce that number from almost 15,000 down to below 11,000 and still working hard on it now. I want to commend the governor and the commissioner, who have really put a lot of effort into helping ending hoteling, which is something that's been important, a big issue in our state, and also to just helping children find permanent homes. On your desk, because of the questions asked yesterday, you'll see another thing about foster children and potentially sponsoring them at Christmas time. We took and tried to pull some of the ones who were older, who may have had, maybe about to age out of the system, so that we could really just take and wrap our arms around and embrace them. In this time, that's about to be another big question in their lives of where they're going. So if you'd like to help again, please see the letter on your desk can direct you to a website where you can read their stories, see what is going on in their life. If you would like to sponsor a specific child this Christmas time, just get back with me and tell me that child ID number specifically, and we'll make sure you get the list that that child has requested in this Christmas period. Thank you so much for your generosity that you showed yesterday, and it's something that I knew very well would come from this chamber, but it was great to see in a bipartisan manner. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the majority whip for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senators, it's going to be a short speech this morning. We have a lot to get through today, but I wanted to come before you and also bring up a passing of a good friend of mine this week. Yesterday, the former mayor of Dahlonega passed away after an extended illness for many years. But Gary McCullough was a 41-year-career employee of the Georgia Power Company. He was our area He was our area engineer and area manager in Dahlonega for many years. He served on the city council for fourteen years, and then he was elected mayor of Dahlonega for fourteen more years. He and I served together when I was a county commissioner back twenty years ago, and we worked well together and got a lot of great things done. He was a true public servant, a man of God. He was a deacon of the Dahlonega Baptist Church. His wife, Charlotte, is a beautiful lady. They have a great family with three children, Gary, Flint, Leah, and Molly are his children. We all grew up together, so I'm going to miss the funeral today because we're down here taking care of the people's business, but I would like for you all to join me in honoring his life and give a moment of silence, please.
Senators asked us to rise and offer up a moment of silence.
Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 47th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Said the two times to the well in one session. That's like a record. For me, I wouldn't do this, but I did want to let the President know, I've got an extra seat for the Georgia Georgia Tech basketball game tonight if you'd like to join me and watch the Dogs crush those little Yellow Jackets. But I did want to welcome my folks. I wanted to introduce everybody over here in my little back corner over here. I've got not only our school board, but our county commissioners and our elections office. They've been over working real hard, drawing some maps and getting things worked out, and I wanted to recognize them and happy to have them. I hope you'll stop by and introduce yourselves. Said it is great to have folks from home, and the main thing is, is that they can work on the same page at the same time and get everything working for the betterment of folks in Madison County. So, let's welcome them to the chamber.
I like our chances, I like our chances in the basketball game tonight better than I do the football game next Saturday, but... Chair recognizes the Senator from the 36th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise today to take a moment to lift up the name of Michael Langford, a lifelong activist and fighter for freedom, mentor to youth, a presence in our community, a constituent of mine who has left this world this week from chronic illness at the age of sixty-three. Michael Langford comes from a family whose name has been very familiar here at the state Capitol. His brother, Arthur Langford, served as a House member, served as a Senate member. Many of us pass by on an almost daily basis the Arthur Langford Parkway, which was named in honor of the service of Michael Langford's older brother. Many of us knew him well. Michael Langford founded the United Youth and Adult Conference. He spent more than a year engaged in the search for missing and murdered children in that horrible episode in our city's history, and he was out there with teams of people leading the effort, night and day. Senator James here, one of our colleagues, and her husband provided the food for energizing that search that went on for over a year. He wrote The Life of a King. He wrote and starred in it, and it played for years around Atlanta venues. He's a deeply devout person. His commitment to community really came from who he was as a spiritual person, and up to the last days before his death, he still offered counsel and guidance to others. He mentored countless youth. He worked for the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. He was a chief lieutenant of Reverend James Orange. These are names that are very familiar to those of us in Atlanta. I would ask that as we mourn his loss and celebrate the incredible role model that he was, that you would join me, please, for a moment of silence for Michael Langford.
Senators asked that we rise for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 14th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody that knows me knows I love Christmas and I love this time of year, and shout out to my wife, who has already got our nine Christmas trees up, and I want to make sure that all of us have the opportunity to understand that's really what's important this time of year. But really, I rise to brag on two people, one being our daughter, Faith. Many of you watched her grow up and seen her name come up in many things and legislations we're talking about, but last night, she was hired to become the PR director for gubernatorial candidate over in Alabama, so shout out to her. I'm so proud of what she's been able to do. And then, many of you voted on a piece of legislation that we pushed through here, and we want to invite you up to Bartow County as, once again, we're going to open another museum late this week, and then next week. It's called the Savoy, and it will be the state-of-the-art automobile museum that will be part of the family of Tullis and the Booth and the Resource Museum up there. So, come on up to Bartow County and join in as we open and inaugurate the Savoy Auto Museum. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 32nd for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here today to give a shout out to a great Georgian who was named yesterday as the new Commissioner for the Department of Veteran Services. Her name is retired Lieutenant Colonel Trish Ross. She's an Air Force Colonel, and she's currently the head of the Vector Center, which is the center that we have that helps veterans transition out of the military and into civilian life. It's great when the most qualified person for a job is selected. She's going to do a great job. She starts December first, so congratulations, Colonel Ross. We're looking forward to great things from the Department of Veteran Services. Thank you. I yield the well.
All right, we're going to move on with the next order of business. You have a consent calendar of privileged resolutions before you. Does any Senator wish to remove a resolution from the consent calendar? Is there objection or adoption of the resolutions on the consent calendar? The chair hears none, and the resolutions on the consent calendar are adopted. Secretary, will you please read a series of privileged resolutions?
Senate Resolution 52 EX by Senator Hatchett of the 50th and others. A resolution recognizing and commending the city of Helen and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and it is adopted.
Senate Resolution 53 EX by Senator Hatchett of the 50th. A resolution honoring the life and memory of Deputy Lena Marshall and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
Senate Resolution 54 EX by Senator Harbison of the 15th and others. A resolution commending PMB Broadcasting LLC and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
Senate Resolution 55 EX by Senator James of the 35th and others. A resolution recognizing November thirty, 2021, as Youth Legislative Assembly Day at the state Capitol and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
Senate Resolution 56 EX by Senator James of the 35th and others. A resolution honoring the life and memory of LaMarcus Kwame Glaze and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted.
Senate Resolution 57 EX by Senator Harbison of the 15th and others. A resolution recognizing and commending Dr. Kamisha Harbison and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Are there any... Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to suspend the rules for the purpose of the third reading and consideration of Senate Resolution 33 EX.
Mr. Secretary, please read the caption.
Senate Resolution 33 EX by Senator Harbison of the 15th. A resolution recognizing and commending Minister Edward O. DeBeau's and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Rules recommends that this resolution do pass by substitute Senator Mollison, the 53rd District Chair.
Majority Leader has asked for unanimous consent to suspend the rules for the purpose of the third reading and consideration of SR 33 EX. Is there objection? The chair hears none, and it is so. Mr. Secretary, will you please read the caption of SR 33 EX?
SR 33 EX by Senator Harbison of the 15th. A resolution recognizing and commending Minister Edward O. DeBeau's and for other purposes.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 15th to present the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. This is just simply a resolution honoring Minister Ed DeBeau's, who has been a civil rights worker in the Columbus, Georgia area for many, many years, and more importantly, he is a retired sergeant in the United States Army who decided to continue his work for his country and his state by trying to help people who are otherwise lacking in voice. So, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you. No question, Mr. President. I will yield the well.
You have no questions.
Thank you, sir.
Does any other Senator wish to speak for or against the measure? The chair sees none. The question is on the adoption of the committee substitute. Is there objection to adoption of the committee substitute? Chair hears none, and the committee substitute is adopted. Is there objection to agreeing on the report of the committee which is favorable to the adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none, and the main question's ordered. Questions on the adoption of the resolution by substitute? All those in favor vote yea. Opposed, nay. The Secretary will unlock the machine. On the adoption of the resolution by substitute, the yays are forty-six and ayes are zero. This resolution having received the records of constitutional majority is therefore adopted by substitute. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? The chair sees none. We will now move on to the rules calendar. Mr. Secretary, can you please read the caption of SB 2 EX?
SB 2 EX by Senator Kennedy of the 18th and others. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts to provide for a short title, provide for when such representatives shall take office, to provide for continuation of the present congressional districts until a certain time, to provide for related matters and for other purposes. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reaportment and Redistricting recommends this bill do pass by substitute Senator Kennedy of the 18th District Chair. The Senate Committee on Reaportment and Redistricting offers the following substitute to SB 2 EX. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for the composition and number of congressional districts to provide for a short title, to provide when such representatives shall take office, to provide for continuation of present congressional districts until a certain time and for other purposes. Mr. President, a minority report has been filed and has been placed on each member's desks. That completes the order.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 18th to speak to SB 2 EX.
Well, good morning, colleagues, and greetings. I don't know about y'all, but I've been looking for this Friday. I suspect you have too. I want to present to you SB 2 EX, and I want to begin by thanking some folks. I want to first thank all of the people on the redistricting committee. As y'all know, y'all have heard me say, and we'll talk about it a little bit this morning, about the travels that many of the folks on that committee toured the state as part of our listening tour to find out what the folks of Georgia wanted, not only from their Senate maps, but also from the congressional maps that we're going to talk about here today. Secondly, I want to thank our Lieutenant Governor, the President of this body, and I appreciate his involvement, and I appreciate his wisdom, and I certainly appreciate his Chief of Staff, Macy McFall, and all the work that she did in helping and being a great resource, notwithstanding letting the Senate lead, letting the Senate determine what needed to be done here, but always being a great sounding board and a great resource in making sure that the trains ran on time and that we got to the point where we are today on Friday with an opportunity for us to all vote on this map that I know y'all are just as happy as I am, that this is the third of the three maps that we need to complete to do the business that we've got to do for Special Session 2021. Finally, I want to thank all of you members. We don't agree on everything. Sometimes we agree on lots, and sometimes we disagree on lots, but I want to thank you for the spirit in which y'all have approached this, and also want to thank, quite frankly, some of the folks from the Democratic side that have privately and otherwise made comments to me and others about how, you know, this really was a good and fair process, and some of which do that in retrospect of how things looked twenty years ago when the Democrats ran things or ten years ago when the Republicans ran things. But regardless of when, I appreciate those comments and about how we have had truly a fair and transparent process. So, as y'all know, this has been going on for months. We started in the summer with what we jokingly refer to as our Summer Concert Series Tour of Georgia, going around the state, listening to folks of what they wanted and what they expected of the job that we had to do. We had the public hearings. We had committee education. We came to the Capitol for a day for any organization that wanted to come talk to us, and then we adopted the guidelines, and y'all have heard me talk about that, but I can't tell you how pleased and quite frankly proud I am that we came together as a committee and decided unanimously, all Republicans and all Democrats, as to what the guidelines would be. That is, what are the values that we're going to have that drive the process of determining the maps that we vote on? And those guidelines have been followed. They were adopted unanimously, and they've been followed throughout the process. And as y'all know, we've also had opportunities for public comment, in person, virtually, online. That same process that y'all were much a part of on the Senate maps have also applied to the congressional maps. And something else that we did that quite frankly I think was very good and better than maybe we even anticipated, and that is we really put pen to paper and did some serious work in trying to figure out early on what the congressional maps ought to look like, and let's get that published out there so the public has a long time to look at it. Notwithstanding the truncated time of six to eight weeks to do this job that normally folks have six to eight months to do the job, we were able to work with the information that we got, and obviously, the congressional maps are a little easier. You've got fourteen districts you're drawing instead of fifty-six for our own personal maps, but nonetheless, we got, we were able to publish a map on September the 27th, and that allowed for public comment for, quite frankly, almost two months now. And also, I commend the Democrats. They did the same thing. They worked, and they published a congressional plan that was released on October the 21st, and it sat out there for now a number of weeks so that... and it sat out there for now a number of weeks so that public comment could be received on that as well. And dozens of comments have been received online with regard to the maps that we put out in September. We have worked to take into account all of the comments. I will tell you that this map fairly, excuse me, represents all Georgians, and it is a map that we can be proud of. It is not gerrymandered. One of the words that we've used in looking at it, quite frankly, is it's a really technical word. It says, "It's a pretty map." It is. It's a pretty map. You don't see funky lines and weird drawn districts. It's a pretty map because you look at it and it is striking visually from the standpoint of it is not gerrymandered. So, that being said, y'all have got the map on your desk in front of you. Let me just go quickly and talk about a few of the districts. I'm not going to go into the detail that I did on the Senate map. Don't worry about that. But the second district, the second congressional district, starting in the southwest part of the state, is largely very similar to and largely what the Joint Democratic Caucus proposed for congressional district number two. Similarly, CD three is very similar to what the Democrats proposed. As you come on around, the eighth district is very similar, maintaining communities of interest, very similar to the congressional district that existed before. Again, some changes that y'all know were required by the population shifts. For example, you will see in congressional district number two that there is some growth because the current, that current district had to gain, I think we had to add ninety thousand people to it. So you can understand why a number of counties increased, and that, of course, had a ripple effect around the system. The first congressional district is very similar to what it was, didn't have the, quite the challenges of the population changes there. Coming around on around with CD twelve, some changes between twelve and ten that really were necessitated as an effect of the ripple effect from the significant growth that we continue to see in Gwinnett County and the Atlanta and metro areas. Of course, across the top of the state, we have two congressional districts, the ninth up in northeast Georgia and the fourteenth in northwest Georgia. Those districts, while mountainous in the northeast and mountainous in the northwest, are really two different communities of interest. I know I've heard the Senator from the fifty-fourth talk about the mountain range that divides that area of our state, if you will, and the difficulty, if you're on one side of it, to get to the other one. And we heard about that when the Senator from the fifty-fourth hosted us in Dalton in the public hearing that we had. And so we've respected that. The eleventh coming on around was, we were able to keep two counties whole and then two partial counties. One of the things that we heard from was Pickens County wanted to be reunited, and we were able to do that. And then the metro counties that you see before you, which again changed largely because of population drivers. So, a few more specifics, and I'm not going to tarry on too long, y'all. This is, this map meets the legal obligation of zero deviation, meaning plus or minus one person. That's required by the Constitution. That's a much more difficult job than it was with regard to our Senate maps, which we didn't have that obligation, but nonetheless came within a one percent of deviation up or down in the maps that we have passed. I'll also tell you that the map you have before you complies with the Voting Rights Act. There are four majority-minority districts and five, several and five minority-opportunity districts included in the map that you see. Also, keeping with the theme of the, of the approach that we had in the Senate maps and also the principles that we agreed to, which was, we were going to really, as best we could, respect county boundaries. We've done that. And we've done a better job, quite frankly, than the bill that we all, or excuse me, that the map that we all have now. The current bill that you have before you splits fifteen counties on the congressional district side, and that's the same as what we had proposed back in September on the twenty, on the September twenty-fourth map that we published. In contrast, the map that we have today splits sixteen counties. The Democrat map that's proposed splits eighteen counties. So this is the best version that you, that you will have seen with regard to trying to respect counties. While there are some precinct splitting that's inevitable because we have to reach that zero deviation requirement, we split as few a precincts as possible while reaching that goal and also tried to find logical places to divide the counties that were necessary to divide. This also, this map also, very importantly, respects communities of interest. Georgia is such a beautiful state with great people and such a, such diversity of different cultures, different communities of interest, different, different drivers of industry versus agriculture. We all enjoy being Georgians, but there are a lot of different communities of interest, and we've done our best to recognize that in forming the fourteen districts that you have, that we have to divide. It also recognizes that there are some large districts that often have to take in a lot of territory, and that's what y'all have heard about before. Rural Georgia has not had the explosive population growth that Atlanta and Gwinnett County and some of the metro counties have had. We've had to obviously account for that in the numbers. As y'all have heard me say, the main driver on all maps are population changes and the numbers there. We've also got our traditional districts at the corners of the state, and the cores of existing districts are largely maintained. While incumbents don't have to live in their district to run for Congress, every incumbent under this map, every incumbent member of Congress has a district to run in. So with that, Mr. President, if I have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or I'll yield the well.
You have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well, and thank you for your consideration of this. Thank you for your cooperation, and ask you to please vote for the bill that you'll have before you for the last map of our special session. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. The chair recognizes the Senator from the forty-second to speak to the measure. Want to take a second to recognize a former member of this great chamber. Mr. Ellis Black is with us here. And his beautiful bride. Sorry for that brief interruption there. Chair recognizes the Senator from the forty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we're all tired and ready to go home and complete this process and enjoy some Thanksgiving turkey, but it's important to not neglect the duty that is in front of us with approving new congressional maps. It's important to really study them closely. And I think you'll hear from a few speakers that will raise some issues that perhaps the presenter of the bill neglected to include in his remarks. So I'm happy to start us off and present a bit of a different perspective that is a perspective shared by millions of Georgians across our great state when it comes to this redistricting process. Stated plainly, this map does not fairly represent Georgia. Let's begin with just a few numbers to review that frame our conversation today and any analysis of our congressional map. There are almost eleven million Georgians. Our population grew by one million citizens over the last ten years, and one hundred percent of that growth was in communities of color, while the non-Hispanic white-only population declined over the last ten years. The growth also, one hundred percent, in urban communities while there was continued and fairly significant depopulation in some more rural parts of our state. In 2020, this changing population of Georgia elected Democrats in three statewide races for the first time in almost two decades. I'm proud, and I know we're all proud, to represent citizens in such a diverse, growing, and dynamic state. One that I know Professor Charles Bullock refers to as the Growth South, as opposed to the Stagnant South, which is some of our other surrounding states. So now, as a body, we are tasked with incorporating these dramatic changes to Georgia, to our state's population and political preferences into new congressional districts. The citizens that spoke up at town halls all summer long, and many of whom came to speak before the redistricting committees, pleaded over and over for a transparent process and fair maps that would reflect Georgia's population and political preferences. Citizens have tried in every possible way to provide comments and alternative map proposals to the committee. Hundreds of people reached out to my office and asking how they could be a part of the process, how they could influence it, and the only ways that I and my staff knew to, to tell them were to come to public forums being held by the committees. And here, we have this new tool. We have an online portal for the first time where you can go and register feedback in advance of maps getting released and then after they're released, although clearly not much time after they were released. And yet, when the committee hearings commenced, there were members of the committee that spent a great deal of time challenging members of the public and even fellow senators on whether feedback was provided or received by the majority party, instead of on the substance of the feedback being put forth. So I do want to talk about the public portal for just a moment. This portal was a step forward, and it was touted by the majority party as a way for the public to engage with the redistricting process. But it had numerous issues, and the mere fact of its existence can't obscure those numerous issues. It's very difficult to find on the website. Some members of this chamber and their staffs had trouble finding it, much less members of the public, the general public, who are far less familiar with our legislative website than, than, than we should be. The, there's no way to provide attachments, meaning no actual map proposals or documentation could be submitted via the portal. Does not have any kind of search function, and it can't, and comments can't be downloaded, and they can't be sorted, and therefore they can't be amalgamated to sort of provide a true analysis of what is the feedback that has been received. These flaws were not lost on members of the public who were trying to engage with the process through the portal. One recent comment stated, "What is being done with these hundreds of concerns voiced in this portal? Have they even been read? By whom? There have been no responses. This portal is clearly a fake pretense to mollify us into thinking our concerns are being heard and acted upon. If our concerns in the portal are being read, how can we know this? Shame on those of you in power and desperately grasping to hold on to it." For a specific example, because the questioning of my colleagues, who are members of the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus, was so pointed about where's you did town halls, where's the feedback from your town halls? Let's be clear that at the committee's direction, Legislative Black Caucus used the public portal to direct feedback from their hearings to the committee, in good faith that it would be received by the committee members. But they were accused repeatedly of not presenting their findings to the reapportionment committee. This dishonest finger pointing at citizens and at Senate Democrats is gaslighting, pure and simple. As the majority party and leaders of this chamber and of a committee stacked with twice as many Republicans as Democrats, it's Senate Republicans who have the responsibility to provide for a clear and open process to solicit input and alternative map proposals. This gaslighting is nothing but a distraction to undermine maps that weren't drawn by Republicans or were drawn by citizens and to avoid attention on the last-minute introduction of biased, gerrymandered maps. It's actually abundantly clear that the majority did not incorporate feedback from voters who asked for transparency, fair representation of minority voters, and partisan fairness. Perhaps that's why there really weren't any speakers in favor of the maps before the committee. So what did this partisan rush process deliver for Georgia? A map that fails to reflect the population changes we have seen in Georgia. It aims to give Republicans a sixty-four percent majority of a congressional delegation in a fifty-fifty state. It does not add any minority-opportunity districts, despite all the population increase having come from communities of color. It reduces the number of competitive districts, bad for democracy, and redraws a recently flipped Metro Atlanta district all the way up into Dawson County. To tie all this back in together, gerrymandered maps go hand in hand with voter suppression to subvert the will of the people and attempt to protect the party in power. In a democracy, this power belongs to the people. We are in the people's house. None of our seats belong to us. The will of the people of Georgia is clear, and that's why we're seeing these gerrymandered maps. For the last decade, they registered to vote in record numbers, organized like never before, knocked on more doors than ever before, and they voted. Even when it meant standing in line for hours after a long day of work, they still voted. Even when it meant going back home to get the quote-unquote "right ID" or provide other forms of proof of citizenship, they voted. Even in the middle of a pandemic, they voted in record numbers. And the predictable response, in fact, it's really a cliche, is from those in power is to try to turn back the clock and enshrine white Republican minority rule. But the people of Georgia see this for what it is, another attempt at voter suppression. And do you know how they will respond? The diverse and dynamic people of Georgia, they will organize. They will vote. And eventually, true democracy in Georgia will prevail. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there are none, I will have my seat. I will yield the well.
You have no questions.
Thank you. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the twenty-second to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm back again to discuss the Voting Rights Act, and it has been something I've been consistently talking about. But it's one because actually I don't, not an expert in it at all, but it's one that I've learned. And sometimes though, as you learn things, it actually becomes more clear how important it is and where the mistakes are actually being made. Because we say that we actually follow the Voting Rights Act, but what we wanted to actually find out is if that's actually happened. And actually, yesterday's hearing, when we were in the hearing on yesterday, some things came to focus about some of our own misconceptions about how this actually works. For instance, I got the impression that many persons took the position or thought that the position was, that maybe the VRA violation was, had to be done through purposeful discrimination. And I could certainly see that if somebody thought that a group was accusing them of being purposeful discriminatory or racist, how that would change the whole conversation. Purposeful discrimination can be part of a VRA claim, especially under the Fifteenth Amendment and under Section Two, but it's really not what we're discussing now. What we're discussing now is more or less basically not only the process of it, but how it affects the African-American vote, whether purposeful or not, how it affects the votes minority, whether purposeful or not. In fact, the court, whether legislature, took away this purposeful discrimination or the intent test because it caused so much division, and it caused so much division between persons. because it caused so much division and it caused so much division between persons. And so that was gone. It does exist, but it's not really what we've been discussing. So I get where persons may believe, well, you're saying I purposely discriminate against it. It's not what Section 2 actually says at all. What it really actually says and is that, just to look at it so we can actually know what it says, since we keep kind of saying Section 2, Section 2, Section 2. I don't know if anybody's actually read the definition of it. Just specifically says that the state of political subdivision is prohibited from imposing any voter qualification or prerequisite to voting or any standards of practice or procedures that result in the denial or abridgement of the right of citizens to vote on account of race or color. That's the general prospect. But then it actually then says, well, how do you prove that? And it says you prove that through a totality of circumstances, which reveal that the political process leading to the election are not equally open to participation by members of a protected class. And that's one of the key things, totality of the circumstances. So what our analysis is supposed to be and what it's basically turned into was racial block voting, polarized voting. That's all we really discussed. But that's not what the law is. The law actually wants you to look at a totality of circumstances to understand whether your procedure, in this case redistricting, has been one that has had that negative effect on minority voting. Also understand that even minority voting or what constitutes a minority is not even settled also, certainly African-Americans are, Hispanics are, but there's, there's also influxes in the law as far as that is concerned that we could have addressed and we should have addressed and we should have looked at. So what are some of those totality of the circumstances? It's not just racially polarized voting. It's whether your body has a history of official, official discrimination that affected the right of members of the minority group to register, vote, or participate. The extent to which voting in the election is racially polarized. That's number two among many. The extent the state of political subdivision had used unusually, unusually large election districts, majority vote requirements or other voting procedures that may enhance or discriminate against the minority group. The extent to which members of the minority group bear the effects of discrimination in such areas of education, employment, health, which hinders them the ability to participate effectively in process. Another factor, whether political campaigns have been characterized by overt or subtle racial appeals. The extent to which members of the minority group have been elected to public office in the jurisdiction is also something to look at. Whether there has been a lack of responsiveness on the part of elected officials of the particularized needs of the members of the minority group. And there are actually a few more. The point being, no one can say that this process is accomplished, embodied all of those factors. When we start talking about whether we followed the Voting Rights Act, we have to look at all of those factors. That wasn't done by any metric. That was not done. We didn't look at that. And if we actually would have looked at it, we may have found that you had racially polarized voting, but you may have also found that maybe within that jurisdiction, there were no overt claims for, for race in a, in a, in an election, in a campaign. You might have saw racially polarized voting, but you may have also found that, you know what? Those elected officials are responsive to all the needs of their community. But you also may have found that you had racially polarized voting, but the elected officials are not responsive. Or there is racial appeals on the campaign trail. That's how you have an intelligent conversation about whether we actually are following the Voting Rights Act. Not just say, "Do you think you have racially polarized voting? Yeah, I guess we do. All right, that's it. It's over." That's not what the courts have told us to do. And then even with racially polarized voting, experts come testify, this isn't me saying this, this is the, the case law. Experts come in and say, "This is the analysis that I use." Analysis, not gut feeling, not just what I think happened, but analysis. And the experts could have argued about that and there are different analyses that can be used. We should have heard from them. We should have heard from them. We, then we could have said, okay, well, there is racially polarized voting, but the member, the elected officials in that area are totally responsive. So maybe this isn't a violation. Or there's not racially polarized voting because that's only one factor, but the members of that, of that, those elected officials are not responsive at all. All we did was got caught up on one factor. And the court says it's basically nine different factors that we look at, none more important than the other. Because we weren't doing this logically. We were just rushing through it. But you know who is going to do it? The courts are going to do it. The lawyers are going to do it. The judges are going to do it. The experts are still going to come in and testify. And we say, "Well, this satisfied the Voting Rights Act because we have so many majority, minority districts." And the court's going to say, "Says who?" Says me, I guess. Because you ain't taking no testimony from anybody. Nobody's come to really testify to this in a logical way. Because even the persons we had, quite frankly, they're rushed because of course we do instant redistricting, almost like instant justice, everything is always a rush, but that's, that's a whole other conversation about how things kind of go. So they're rushed, they got three minutes. So they're getting confused. They're supposed to be experts. They're confusing themselves about what's going on. That's not how to do this process. Doesn't matter what the end result was, it's whether the process was followed correctly. And it's big, it's huge and it matters. It matters not only for this, it matters because race, that thing called race has been the defining element in America. And it's only changing. It's only changing. These concepts are only changing. We are going to have to continue to deal with this. Because we are the most diverse nation on earth, but we have to deal with it and face it. So let me give you a couple of cases because this also came up. Harding versus County of Dallas, Texas, federal court case, 2011. The court in that case said, concerning the Voting Rights Act, "The plaintiffs must first prove that the Anglo population in Dallas County is sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a single-member district." The plaintiffs, an Anglo minority, wanted to elect a candidate of their choice, a white Republican. None of y'all knew that. Because yesterday I got the impression that persons thought that the Constitution was being used as an us against them thing and it's not. The Constitution, the Voting Rights Act is for everybody. So here you had Anglo plaintiffs, white plaintiffs saying, "We believe discrimination is taking place." They couldn't get past the first hurdle because you have to actually show that you're a cohesive minority, that you can actually elect somebody. But I guarantee you, most of you believe that this, this was being used as an us against them. You want to use a Section 2 against us. And sometimes by the testimony, I might even understand that. But maybe if we had looked at these type of cases and said, "Oh, this is for all of us. This is important." These are conversations that are happening out the, the nation. United States versus Brown, a federal case, Court of Appeals case. A Section 2 violation was found with a chairman of the county Democratic Executive Committee. I'm sure somebody just jumped on that, right? And the election commission, who also was chairman of the election commission, found that the chairman, voting procedures were discriminatory. The chairman was African-American. Here's the point. It's not us versus you. It's the Constitution of the United States that we're talking about that applies to everybody. And we have just run through it because we looked at the most sacred document that we have that has its flaws. But we just ran through it because we were to the position, oh, it helps them versus us. And it's not like that at all. It helps all of us. And if we believed that, if we truly believed it, not just words, but if we truly believed it, we'd have went through this process thoroughly because we wouldn't have been afraid of the answers. Because we would have known through those other cases is here to protect all of us. We don't truly believe it, at least the majority does not. I've never once said what the result should be. I just said we should do the analysis correctly. We have failed, not just because of this particular situation, but because we took the easy way out. We failed to tackle the most pressing problem that has always existed in this nation and we had an opportunity to do that. And our only answer is going to be, well, they didn't do it 2001, they didn't 2011. Just imagine if your constituent came to you and said, "You won't return my phone calls." And you said, "Well, the guy who informed me, he didn't return your phone calls. So why are you holding me to that?" It's foolish. That's not how we do government. One of the things that is at stake is not just the next 10 years. But when you start understanding that there are serious concerns or conversations about, which I just described to you. Does the Voting Rights Act even apply to whites in this concept, what you see it does? Now you have different minorities which are coming prevalent. How does the Voting Rights Act respond to that? This issue of race is not going away and we kick the ball. In 10 years from now, somebody else will come with the same issues and it may be different racial components. And they'll want to look to us and say, "How did they handle it?" And all they'll be able to say is, "Well, some people said it's racially polarized voting. They took a vote and that was it." Now it's up to you to address the most difficult issue that has ever faced this nation. And that has always been the intersection of race and class and voting. So maybe that body will actually live up to the motto that we say every day and have the courage to do this correctly. And with that, I yield the well.
Senator has yielded the well. The chair recognizes the Senator from the 9th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So let's examine the transparency claim for a bit. When the majority party presented this map, they spoke in great deal about what they had done to produce it. They filled the room and talked about listening to Georgians, meeting population requirements and complying with the Voting Rights Act. They gave us this information in the name of transparency. And so in the same spirit of transparency, I want to draw attention to some things that have gone unsaid. The first thing I want to point out is when these maps were dropped, Wednesday afternoon, we have not even given, and now here we are today, and the map's not up here. I thought it was going to be up here. But here we are today. So we have given the public less than 48 hours to comment, to look at, to give us their input on these maps. We did not hear, for example, what standards were used in determining compliance with the Voting Rights Act. Or who assisted the majority party with determining that these lines were even in compliance. We were not given the name or contact information of the individual in the majority party that the majority party claims was specifically, was specially hired by legislative council and was available to both parties despite repeated requests. We did not hear from our Republican colleagues about the reasoning behind some of these changes. Why, for example, does the 6th District, which needed a minimal changes in terms of population requirements, move from 3,055, 3,05500 voters out, you move those voters out to bring those same amount of voters, different voters into that district? We did not hear an explanation for moving a majority-minority cities of Ostel and Powder Springs in South Cobb County to the 14th, 14th District. And I'm from Ostel, so I have a personal connection here. We don't have answers to basic questions about this map. The majority members of this committee did not answer questions from the public. Who came to speak on behalf of themselves and the community? The only explanation we've been given is that you can't look at any district in a vacuum, that every change affects all the other districts. But what they're saying is that there is a driving force behind all of their changes. But we know that force is preserving a Republican majority. That's the elephant in the room. That's the answer to almost every unanswered question that those of us in this room and the public has about this map. And I've had people reach out to me on social media platforms, my constituents. It's like, "I don't understand these maps." And I go back to tell them, "It's not supposed to make sense to you." This is designed to hold the Republican majority regardless of your input. The real reason we haven't had transparency is that there is a lot they don't want us to see. They don't want us to see the abuse of power. They don't want us to see the greed. They don't want us to see the suppression. But we've seen enough and we know the truth. We can look at this map and see that it delivers a 64% Republican majority in a state that gave the GOP less than 50% of the vote in three recent statewide elections. But maybe we have enough transparency to see what's happening. We can plainly see that this is not the map of the people. Not the people of Georgia. And it's not the map that the people of Georgia asked for. And we will be able to look at the party breakdown and vote count at the end of this process to see exactly who this map is drawn to serve. We had an opportunity in this special session. We could have listened, cooperated, and delivered for the people of Georgia. And I took it upon myself to look at the public comments. I went through the database. It's a little hard to find. You gotta dig a little. That's not transparent. If you want people to see it, you put it right on the front page. It says House of Representatives. Give them that link. But I dug a little because I wanted to look to see what, actually what our constituents out there were saying. I'm going to read a few of them to you because I don't think my Republican colleagues have bothered to look or take into account what Georgians are saying. A. Rice, Fulton County. "The blatant gerrymander of Georgia legislative, legislative districts is incredibly unethical and should be illegal. Republicans are distorting representation in our congressional delegation and state senate districts. It's ridiculous that Dawson County and Sandy Springs have common interests. Minority voters and Democrats are being disenfranchised all over the state. Shame on the Republican Party." M. Blackman of DeKalb County. "As a longtime 80-year-old Georgia resident, I have been watching the news regarding the meetings of the two redistricting committees and the maps that you've drawn. Having participated in two of the public hearings you conducted back in the summer and a couple more starting November 3rd, I am very disappointed at how little your maps reflect what constituents said to you around the state. You did not pay attention when small cities requested not to be split into multiple house and senate districts. And you bragged about keeping communities whole, but never mentioned how you gerrymandered most of the small cities." D. Badera, Forsyth County. "To move the ad Forsyth and Dawson Counties to GA 6 completely alters its character and clubs in a diverse urban electorate with a highly homogeneous rural one. Compared to proposals for other districts, the extent and magnitude of this change is highest for GA 6. It's clearly designed to suppress the voices, votes, and interests of the diverse electorate that currently comprises the district by electing a representative who would be beholden to its rural constituents at their expense. Such, such tactics descend, descend from a long line of anti-democratic approaches going way back to Jim Crow, which seek to use the cover of democratic institutions to actively undermine our democracy. They speak to the worst of our impulses and must be called out." Manson of DeKalb County. "The proposed GOP congressional map does not reflect recent political trends. In recent statewide elections, voters went slightly Republican in 2018 and..." In recent statewide elections, voters went slightly Republican in 2018 and slightly Democrat in 2020. We are a fifty-fifty state. An apportionment of seven R and seven D and eight R and six D districts more accurately captures our political preference than the nine R, five D proposal that we have today. The process used by the committees has been neither open nor transparent. Hearings were held only before the census data, hearings were held only before the census data was published, I think they were trying to say before the census data was published, and no criteria are being given for the changes to the districts, and no public hearings on the proposed maps are planned. This is a map that ignores voters' preferences derived from a process which denies meaningful voter input." Folks, we rushed this process. We didn't listen to our voters. We did not really take their comments to heart or their input. We refused to answer questions and then insisted that this was the only way we were going to engage, and that was shown by action. I will vote no on this map, and I will be able to go back to my constituents with a clear conscience. I urge all of you to consider what I'm saying, and I'm asking you to vote no as well. Thank you. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the fifth to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Friends and colleagues of the Senate. The redistricting process has failed to provide Georgia with representative maps in a number of ways. It has failed to provide enough majority-minority district for the State House, the Georgia's Senate, and the U.S. Congress. It has failed to protect the seat of a number of female incumbents, many of whom are recently elected yet trusted and supported in their districts. This congressional map draws the incumbent Representative Carolyn Bordeaux out of a district she recently flipped. In addition to that, we have seen that with this congressional map and with the Senate map we passed last week, these maps are targeting women of color. The Senate map made changes to the Senate district held by the only Asian-American woman to serve in this body, in this Georgia Senate, which will make it much more difficult for her to keep this seat. Now with this congressional map, the majority is targeting a black woman and only one of two in our delegation in order to redraw her district to make it safely Republican. We cannot say to the people of Georgia, we see you, we are drawing fair maps, we want you to be represented, while at the same time drawing lines that erase the extremely hard-fought gains of minority women in this state. We can definitely say we chose our voter instead of our voter choosing us. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the fifteenth to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The congressional map we have here before us, we've already passed two maps for our state legislature that are not necessarily representative of the Georgia of today. Now we have another map that is designed to entrench GOP power in the state. How do we know that this is not necessarily something to be proud of? The majority party released their proposal just a few hours before the committee meeting to talk about it. They did not give Georgians any time to review the map and offer feedback and comments, apparently in an effort to tamper down the scrutiny of a map. They know that it's unfair. The map draws nine of fourteen districts to favor the GOP. That's sixty-four percent. And we know in the last election, the GOP didn't meet that standard. It is apparently clear that you can't draw a GOP majority in this state without gerrymandering to silence the voice of minorities. Georgia is likely already a majority-minority state, but only five of fourteen proposed congressional districts are majority-minority. But you don't have to take my word for it. All you have to do is go to the website that the state provided for public comeback and feedback, excuse me, or listen to the testimony from the two committee hearings we've had on the map. The people of Georgia have their eyes on us and may not like, and apparently do not like, based on some of the comments we've heard so far, what they have seen and heard because not a single person testified in favor of those districts. You're giving Georgians all the more reasons to go to the polls next year to elect a statewide majority, a new statewide majority. This isn't the only referendum this map will receive. It must cut the mustard of the voters at the polls in every election coming up. It may pass and likely to pass in the chamber at this time, but it probably will fail the public test. The voters of Georgia will keep turning out, and the voices will be heard despite efforts to ignore them. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the forty-eighth to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I rise to speak in opposition to SB two EX, which seeks to redraw Georgia's congressional maps for the next decade. And I'm speaking to you today not just as your colleague, but as a resident of what is, for now, Georgia's sixth congressional district. Now, I don't doubt that the process of redistricting is complex, but the map for the Georgia Six should have been the easiest part of your job. So first, population adjustment, which is supposed to be the sine qua non of redistricting. Based on the results of the 2020 census of Georgia's fourteenth congressional districts, the Georgia Six was the closest already to ideal population size. We have this right here. Double-checked it. It only required a change of about six hundred and sixty voters. Six hundred and sixty, that's fewer people than attend my kid's elementary school, okay? This district was almost exactly the right size, exactly the way it was. However, the Republican congressional map shifts nearly fifty percent of the metro Atlanta population out of the sixth district and brings in a fresh batch of more than three hundred fifty thousand voters from Republican strongholds as far flung as Cherokee, Forsyth, and Dawson Counties. It's really difficult to innocently justify this wholesale transfusion of voters from the Georgia Six, but that didn't stop our Republican colleagues from doing just that. Next, the issue of competitive districts. The Georgia Six was already the most competitive district in the state. Newly flipped in 2018, its evolution is really the exemplar of the rapidly changing suburbs of metro Atlanta, changes the redistricting process should ideally reflect. Instead of preserving this healthy new growth, the new Republican map destroys not just one, but two competitive districts. Not only does it completely recast the Georgia Six to be distinctly Republican, it takes another competitive seat, the Georgia Seventh, and packs it so full of Democratic voters that the power of each person's vote is minimized. This is not what our voters asked for, but that didn't stop our Republican colleagues from doing it anyway. Finally, public input. Much has been made by the Republicans of the public hearings, the concert series held around the state this summer prior to the census data being released. Much less has been made of the public comments logged after these congressional maps were actually released publicly, only one day before the committee voted it through. I think if our Republican colleagues are going to go through the charade of pretending that we're listening to our voters, some of these comments from voters about the Georgia Six in specific should be shared right here on the Senate floor. All these comments are direct quotes from the public portal for redistricting, the link to which, incidentally, is actually pretty difficult to locate. L. Mullis, no relation, of Fulton County writes, "It is clear that this redistricting is intended to silence the voices of minority and more progressive communities who have spoken out loud and clear in the past few elections. I live in Sandy Springs, and my concerns are significantly different from those of someone who resides in Dawson County." A. and Tedji and Jettie of Fulton County writes, "I am absolutely appalled by the degree of partisan gerrymandering Georgia Republicans are engaging in to redraw the congressional maps. The proposed sixth congressional district combines urban Fulton County with rural Dawson County. It makes a Democratic district a fifteen-point gain for Republicans. This new district is clearly a direct attack on Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth and especially disenfranchises the minority voters who currently reside there." V. Manson of DeKalb County writes, "The Republicans state that they want to maintain the central core of the districts and be responsive to the constituents. In Chairwoman Rich's presentation of their map, she frequently cites what they have heard from voters during the town halls. She offers no evidence of support from the District Six voters to justify this massive change." And maybe most heartbreaking, Leaval, J. P. of Fulton County writes, "Do legislators even read these comments? Given the resulting maps, I do not blame voters for wondering. This recasting of the Georgia Six, represented by the first-ever Congresswoman of color to ever hold that seat, is an insult to the principles Democratic elections ideally seek to defend. Further, it's an insult to our voters, and they will remember." It's often said that people fear change, but I don't actually think that's usually the case. I actually think what people fear is not so much change, but loss. And fear of loss is exactly what these maps demonstrate. Because redistricting in this way, drawing districts so contrived as to be ludicrous, to shore up power that is clearly fading, looks like a balding man trying to fool the world with an embarrassing comb over. Because no matter how hard you try, it's evident to everyone how desperately you're trying to hide what you've lost already. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the thirty-third to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, my fellow senators, colleagues, friends, and y'all. As you know, I don't come to the well that often. Matter of fact, that's why I ran up here today. But today I came up here because I have a concern, because I've been getting a lot of communication from constituents in Cobb County. I'm not here to praise Caesar, nor am I here to bury Caesar, but today I have a concern. I'm not here to explain to you if God made little green apples, or if it snows in the summertime in Indianapolis, but I have a concern. And my concern is, they moved the congressional person out of, who represents the thirteenth district and moved him out of Cobb County and replaced him with the congressional person from the fourteenth. Now, the area in which the congressional person from the fourteenth came into is one of the most heavily populated African-American areas in Cobb County. As a matter of fact, the first black mayor ever elected in Cobb County is in the fourteenth district now, who represents Powder Springs. Also, the first black mayor ever in the city of Austell is now represented by the person from the fourteenth district. I've gotten a lot of communication from people in the district who are not happy with that because they feel now that their vote will not be heard. And I did try to encourage change so that we could bring the congressional person from the thirteenth back to southwest Cobb County because he's represented for a long time. I appreciate you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my concern, and thank you very much. I yield the well, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes the senator from the forty-fourth to present the measure, or speak to the measure.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Senators, I rise in opposition to SB two EX. The maps that we are voting on today silences the voices of Georgia voters, minimizes the political power of people of color, and ignores that Georgia is equally divided politically. This process and these maps affect Georgians significantly at the voting booth and in their everyday lives. That is why voters should pick their representatives, not the other way around. The majority party has ignored the will of Georgia voters. Georgians asked for transparency and a process that allowed time for meaningful public response, but these were denied. The Republican map was not released to the public until three hours before the committee hearing began. The maps, the map was passed out of committee just twenty-five hours after it was first released to the public. There was not a meaningful opportunity for Georgians to interpret the maps that they will have to live with for ten years. There was very limited opportunity to provide testimony and comment directly to the committee. The committee did not answer any questions from the public about this map. Because we don't have answers, we have just go by what we see, and we see more of the same, efforts to preserve Republican power in the face of a changing electorate. We see a map that was unnecessarily targets one of Georgia's female congressional representatives who was elected and entrusted by her community. We see a map that fails to fairly represent Georgia, one million new non-white residents, or our population increases in urban areas. We see a map that represents the majority party's fear. It is the fear of accountability, fear of having to win on your policies, fear of facing the voters of Georgia without a system that is rigged in your favor. Now, what bothers me about this redistricting process is that my Republican colleagues continue to target and discriminate against women of color. I think there's a conspiracy- I think there's a conspiracy against women of color in the Georgia General Assembly. The two women arrested in jail, one from the House and one from the Senate, who were just exercising their constitutional rights, were arrested and treated unfairly. I believe from the top leadership of this state and from this body, when you use racist tactics like this, that is so outrageous to the public, then you come back and use the law and maps to target and discriminate against women of color, trying to make sure that there are less women of color elected to this body and in Congress. Just look at these maps in the Senate and the congressional one, targeting women of color. That's crazy. It's crazy. But my Democratic colleagues and I aren't afraid. We will keep fighting on behalf of the people of this state, and because we know that we have that support behind us, we will keep finding ways to win. Just know that we will not be silenced when you target women of color. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 35th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of the 56 senators serving in this body, only 17 are women. Yet, according to the Center for American Women and Politics at Rutgers University, in 2021, women currently comprise 31% of state legislators nationally. Women of color, however, make up only 26.5% of women currently, that are currently serving in state legislatures. At a time when the number of women elected to local office is just starting to climb out of the basement, we should not be drawing maps that make it harder for a female incumbent or harder for women to run and win in new districts. We should not be making changes that have a greater impact on districts held by women. But that is exactly what we're doing with these maps. In their drawing of congressional districts, Republicans have drawn out Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth from the 6th district, and in the redrawing of the 7th district, Congresswoman Carolyn Bordeaux is essentially drawn out of her district that she now represents. Their maps targets 50% of the congressional women that are now serving Georgia. With this congressional map, the majority party is targeting a black woman, one of only two in our delegation in order to redraw her district to make it safely Republican. That's unacceptable. In the previously passed legislative maps, Republicans targeted a female senator who happens to also be the only female Asian-American senator in Georgia. And it can be argued that the voices of thousands of Asian-American voters in Senate District 48 are being silenced. There were also major changes in the Senate District 6, currently held by a woman. Specifically, we've seen that this congressional map, and with the Senate maps we passed last week, women, and specifically women of color, have been targeted. It's not new, but it's true. This congressional map, in conjunction with the Senate map, fails to protect the seats of a number of female incumbents, many of whom are recently elected, yet trusted and supported in their districts. Simply put, we cannot say to the people of Georgia, "We see you. We're drawing fair maps. We want you to be represented," while at the same time drawing lines that erase the extremely hard-fought gains of minority women in this state. We are watching a process in which men are using their accumulated power to diminish the political impact of female legislators and voters. Maybe this should not be surprising when we examine which party actually elects women to this body. 15 of the 17 women in this chamber, or I'll say 80%, are Democrats. 68% of the Democrats in this chamber are women. Unfortunately, only 6% of the Republicans in this chamber are women, while 94% are men. And that does not mean, and what does this mean for the women of Georgia? It means that the issues impacting women, for example, childcare, maternity, maternal mortality, reproductive health, will continue to be underfunded and overlooked. You know, women bias has been happening for a long time. I was the second African-American in history to be elected to this body, back in the 90s, during my first tenure. And the first had just been elected for three months, Nadine Thomas, when I won an unexpired term. And it hasn't changed that much since then, unfortunately. So let's erase that target on our backs. Let's erase that bull's eye. This is not gone unnoticed by the women of this chamber or the women voters of Georgia who make up the biggest portion of voters in the state. So please, take the target off our backs. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Steve, you can come up.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get independent.
No, we'll just be careful.
Okay.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 39th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. Georgia has changed. Our state has grown by a million people in the last decade, and in that time, we've trended more and more blue, culminating in the election of President Joe Biden in 2020 and Senators Raphael Warnock and John Ossoff in 2021. The people of Georgia looked at the leadership in this state and in this country and decided it was time for a change. Georgia's 6th congressional district went from being the center of the Republican Revolution to a reliably blue district, thanks in large part to changing attitudes and priorities among suburban voters. Democrats elected Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth in 2018 in a close election, but in 2020, she had a commanding 10-point win, cementing the shift in the district. You wouldn't know it looking at this map, though. Now, rather than consider how they might win those voters back, the GOP has decided to pack them away into an already safe, blue district where their vote doesn't matter as much. The 6th will go from being a competitive, blue district to a safe, red district. This isn't what the people of Georgia demanded when they went to the ballot box in 2017, 2020, or 2021. We're as close to a 50-50 state now as any state in the nation, and our map should reflect that. We should respect the desire of the people of Georgia to vote for their elected officials in free, fair, and competitive elections, rather than pack reliable conservative voters in while dividing liberal-leaning neighborhoods and communities. I can literally think of no reason that people in Fulton and Dawson County should be voting for the same rep. Our work here will be done before the holiday, but never mind that we are getting districts that are carved up like a Thanksgiving turkey. I know that nothing I say up here today will change the minds of those who already knew they were going to vote on this map from the second it was put forward. This map will pass as is, regardless of how blatantly gerrymandered it is. But make no mistake, this has not been a fair process, this has not been a transparent process, and this has certainly not been a collaborative process. Just because you allow people to come forward and speak does not mean that you chose to listen. If you did, then this map would reflect just how much Georgia has changed. I'm disappointed that we will leave this chamber today, having ignored the people of Georgia. Thank you. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 6th to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand today in opposition to SB 2 EX, a congressional map that's been rushed through the process without meaningful public comment, or really any efforts at bipartisan consensus. This map proposed today dilutes the voices of people of color, is the final nail in the coffin, as Republicans work to rig our elections for the next decade. I don't need to spell out the statistics here, they're plain as day. Georgia voted for President Joe Biden with 49.47% of the vote, elected Senator Raphael Warnock with 51%, and Senator John Ossoff with 50.6%, and they're all Democrats. Yet this congressional map will leave us with nine Republican seats and five Democratic seats. So that's 65% Republican representation in Congress in a 50-50 state. Does that sound right to you? We're here to discuss the congressional maps, but there's something greater at play here that we need to unpack. Yet Georgia is changing. Yes, it's becoming more diverse, but Georgia's always been diverse. It's really our greatest strength. I think what the difference is, is that Georgians, now of all backgrounds, identities, are taking power for themselves, and more and more of our elected officials are starting to actually look like and reflect the population of this state. Now, it didn't happen overnight. It happened as a result of decades of organizing and fighting. And look, that scares Republicans, not because it hurts their constituents, or because it results in bad policy, it just leaves them with less power. So what do you do when you're losing or you're behind? Well, you just change the rules of the game. AJC published an article last week about how the redistricting process specifically disadvantages women, who are more likely to be forced out of their seats. You know, Republicans did this in 2011, pairing women incumbents against more senior male colleagues, forcing them out of the legislature. And they're doing it again this time to Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth, breaking up her diverse Cobb County base into four different congressional districts. Now, you're taking Lucy Macbeth out, and you're putting Marjorie Taylor Greene in. Now, I represent Cobb County, and I can tell you that that's not okay. They're trying, you're trying to eliminate her seat, just as you did with the Senator from the 48th. And it's no coincidence that y'all are going after women of color, who are rising stars in this party and in this state, and who consistently, consistently hold Republicans' feet to the fire. Now, there is something profoundly destructive about a political system in which having more talented, more diverse, successful people competing is somehow a bad idea. Now, y'all may remember a speech I gave in 2019, when you rammed through another bill that was an attempt to deny women their fundamental rights. And in that speech, I said that women would reclaim their rights after they reclaimed your seats. And listen, they did. The Senator from the 48th did, the Senator from the 9th, the 39th. They're all new to this chamber. We've been adding women, women of color, women of different backgrounds. We've been growing the strength of women in the Senate and in the House. And now y'all are trying to take it back. So Republican attacks on women have never been subtle, they've never been subtle. And now we have women of color who represent the future of this state, who have actually won higher office in competitive races. They've won races in districts that y'all drew to be Republican. I mean, I took Hunter Hill's place. You know, there was some celebrating earlier this week because Georgia Public Broadcasting published an article about how Georgia leads the nation in black women's representation in the legislature, and that is indeed, indeed, something to be proud of. Black women make up 16.9% of our General Assembly, but it's still not enough, and that's a record. We should celebrate that, but we gotta do more. You know, y'all have drawn the map so that it's all but impossible for our caucus, which looks like Georgia, by the way, to get anywhere near a majority in the next 10 years. In so doing, you diluted the power of people of color, of women, of young people, targeting Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth, the Senator from the 48th, really our entire caucus. You know, this is about putting women in their place. You know what? To that, I say that the place where women belong is in the House, in the Senate, in Congress, and yes, even in the governor's mansion. Some people will look at this gerrymander and say, "Our system is broken. There's nothing we can do." But I think what we all know is that the system isn't broken, it's working exactly the way Republicans have designed it. And that is something we should all be concerned about. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the minority leader to speak to the measure and to also speak to
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. I rise today with a straight face, as the Senator from the 46th so pointedly referred to me in committee yesterday. With a straight face, I rise to vote against the Senate Bill 2 EX, and to report to you the minority report, and to make my own comments. Today, we finished the unfortunate process of gerrymandering the state of Georgia. District lines are required to be drawn to reflect the current population of the state. Unfortunately, the majority's map does not reflect the Georgia of today, as evidenced by the results of the 2020 census. What did the 2020 census tell us? Among other things, it told us that Georgia continues to be a fast-growing state. Everyone in this chamber, regardless of party, is rightly proud that the state returned to... Everyone in this chamber, regardless of party, is rightly proud that the state routinely gets ranked among the best to do business. I don't know what's wrong with that word, it won't come out of my mouth. Routinely, thank you. Our growing economy has led to a growing population. Georgia has about 1 million more people than it did 10 years ago, the last time we drew maps. When we consider how to redraw the maps, we need to consider who those Georgians are. The census always gave us that information. Those Georgians are overwhelmingly black, Asian, Hispanic, and other people of color that mostly live in metro Atlanta. Georgia's non-Hispanic white population decreased from 2010 to 2020, making up 50.1% of Georgia's population as of the census. As of today, Georgia is likely already, and you've heard it said many times in this last three weeks, a majority-minority state. The growth in minority communities in Georgia that has helped drive our economic growth is something that should be celebrated. Not only is Georgia the best state in which to do business, it is an environment in which minority-owned businesses thrive. These new minority residents deserve an equal opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. Unfortunately, the congressional map before us today, just like the Senate and the House maps that have already passed this chamber, failed to provide Georgians of color the representation they deserve. The congressional proposal before us does not provide fair representation to Georgia's richly diverse population. The map both cracks and packs voters of color, and likely only contains five districts in which voters of color can elect the candidates of their choice. Think about that. In a state that is likely majority-minority, only five of 14 districts will likely provide voters of color an opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. In addition to being unfair to voters of color, and like the Senate map this chamber passed, the congressional proposal also targets women and women of color. In the Senate map, this chamber passed the only incumbent that was targeted by the majority as an Asian-American woman. And the congressional proposal before us clearly targets the black female incumbent. Additionally, the proposed 7th district is drawn to exclude the home of the district's current female incumbent. Perhaps Georgia should not be surprised that the process by which these maps have been drawn and enacted discriminate against voters of color and target women. The congressional proposal that is before us, before this body today, was passed in committee yesterday with the support of nine white men. Not a single member of color, nor any woman, voted for this proposal in committee. Indeed, the five votes against this proposal were cast by two black women and three black men. And what will the vote in support of this proposal in this chamber look like today? I have 34 colleagues on the other side of the aisle, 32 of them are men, 31 of those 32 are non-Hispanic white men. These are the individuals today who will dictate the political future of a majority-minority state. Perhaps we should not be surprised that such a group seeks to dictate an unfair future to voters of color and women. Where else does this map fall short? Unlike the Senate and House maps that have already passed this chamber, the congressional proposal before us fails to reflect the dramatic population shift over the last decade from rural to urban areas, and failed to recognize that Georgia's growth was driven by metro Atlanta. Unlike the House and Senate maps that we passed, both of which moved districts from rural areas to growing metro areas, this congressional proposal fails to locate a new district in metro Atlanta. Due to the Congressman from Georgia's 10th district running for statewide office, we have a vacant rural district to work with, without needing to pair anyone running for reelection or otherwise targeting an incumbent. Democrats presented a proposal in which the proposed 10th district is a suburban, majority-minority district just west of Atlanta. It reduces the number of congressional districts in Cobb County from the existing three to two. Unfortunately, the congressional proposal before us moves in the opposite direction, splitting Cobb County into four different districts. Does that make sense? Our proposed 10th district also incorporates communities of interest in Douglas and Fulton Counties that share similar characteristics to Cobb County. It's also worth noting that Cobb County, which the proposal before us split four ways, is a majority-minority county in which voters of color have recently gained more political power. Also, in a move to gain partisan advantage without regard to communities of interest, the majority has proposed a new 6th district that doesn't make sense. Sandy Springs and Dawson County in the proposed 6th share less in common than Sandy Springs, Northeast Cobb, and North Cab in the existing district. However, those communities of interest are dismantled. Again, worth noting that in doing so, the proposal before us reduces the black, Asian, and Hispanic populations in the proposed 6th district. This decision is doubly disappointing, because the current 6th district is the closest to ideal population of any district in the state, being less than 700 people too many. The existing district could have been maintained with minor changes to account for population, which is what our map proposes. Our proposed 6th district also remains a competitive district where both Republicans and Democrats can be elected. This map also unfairly fails to reflect the partisan preferences of Georgians, as we've seen in recent elections. Georgia is a state that is equally divided politically. Yet, the proposal before us seeks to ensure that almost two-thirds of Georgia's congressional delegation will be Republican. Yesterday, I heard the committee chairman try to equate the Republican proposal to the Democratic proposal, despite the fact that our proposal received a B, and theirs received a C on partisan fairness. We all know that a B is better than a C. Our proposal more closely reflects where Georgia is today than the proposal before us. This whole process has been very disappointing from start to finish. The committee spent all summer, supposedly collecting public input, but the maps don't reflect the request of the public. People repeatedly, repeatedly ask for fair maps and a transparent process, and this body completely failed to deliver. The committee considered maps mere days, or even hours, after proposals were made public. It should be very concerning that not a single member of the public spoke in favor of any map the Senate had passed, or the one before us today during, yesterday during Senate committee hearings. And I just, I can't help myself right now. I have got to, I've just got to tell you some of the good stuff that's in our map. And you have it on your desk, you can read it for yourself, but I just got to say it out loud. The Democratic map is a fair map that Georgians asked for. It's a fair map that reflects Georgia's diverse population. It allows voters of color an equal opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. It reflects the political preferences of Georgia voters, and reflects change in population trends within Georgia. Our map provides fair representation to voters of color. Because Georgia is one of the most diverse states in the country, and likely, and I repeat, already a majority-minority state. As of April 2020, Georgia's population was 50.1% white and non-Hispanic. This proposal contains six districts in which minorities are a majority of residents, and a majority of the voting age population, districts 2, 4, 5, 7, 10, and 13. Communities of color have grown in Atlanta metro area over the last decade. African-Americans' population has increased by 22%, over 350,000 people. Hispanic population has increased by 31%, and that's over 147,000 people. The Asian population increased by 45%, over 100,000 people. This map keeps Atlanta metro communities of color together in urban compact districts so that their policy interests are represented. As the Senator from the 46th said to me yesterday, "I sit, you sit there with a straight face," and yes, I do, "stand here today with a straight face and tell you that our map fairly represents the partisan makeup of Georgia's electorate." Georgia is equally divided politically, which we saw clearly in the last election cycle. This proposal gives voters an opportunity to elect a congressional delegation that more closely reflects Georgia's political preferences. Our map fairly reflects population growth and shifts within Georgia. Georgia has experienced significant, significant population growth. And it has become more and more diverse, and has seen its population become more concentrated in the urban and suburban regions of metro Atlanta. Mr. President, the governor calls only set the start of the special session. The Senate, we can stay here as long as we need to. I don't like the idea of coming back next week either. But passing fair maps that will guide the state for a decade is important. I ask you to vote down this map today, and instead consider and pass Senate Bill 3 EX, the Democratic map, which is a fair map that my colleagues and I introduced. Yes, I stand here with a straight face today to let you know that, yes, I'm going to vote against 2 EX. And I ask you with a straight face to do the same thing. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 18th to close debate.
Well, now I have to say good afternoon, colleagues. But we're getting close. I'm not going to keep you too long, but I do want to respond to some of the things that really have been said by the defendants, by the Democrats, excuse me. It's a product of the work hazard of the job I do when I'm not here, right?
Another example of being citizen legislators.
Thank you for that moment. You know, one of the things that's really most puzzling about is the list of deficiencies about the process by which we've gone at this, even to the point of details being suggested, like, oh my gosh, the public portal is hard to find. That the search function wasn't done properly. Where were those comments back when they would have made a difference? Where's the email from the Democrats saying, "Hey, we need to have a better model. We need to make this easier for public access. Let's correct it in a certain way. Let's do it differently." "No, no, don't do it that way, my goodness, then that might reveal that the process we've got is fair. Let's wait till it's game over and we're going down and we're just going to complain about the way the Republicans did it, but we're not going to offer any corrective measure." Does that ring of any credibility to anybody? No, of course not. And all these other maps that are referred to by all these other institutions and different folks, how good must they have been if not one Democratic senator attached it to a bill and dropped it in our hopper? Not one. They had their collective work of their map that the minority leader very eloquently spoke about, but nobody in this chamber thought enough of all these other maps that y'all want to talk about now when we're at the very end of the process. You know, there was a poignant moment, if y'all were in the committee meeting, or if you watched it, you saw it, but I think it's very telling. And it really hearkens back to something I said when I made my closing remarks about the Senate maps and the House maps. Consistency is the hallmark of credibility. And if you're not consistent, you're not really going to be credible. We saw a different version of that visited on us this time. And it came in an exchange in the committee hearing yesterday where it became very apparent regarding the Black Legislative Caucus that we learned in a previous hearing had gone around the state of Georgia, held public hearings in areas that our committee didn't go. We went to nine different ones and had two additional virtual meetings. But the Black Legislative Caucus went around the state and will tell you now and said in the committee hearings, obtained valuable data and very important information. And it was so important, it drove and was included in the maps that they generated. But nobody thought it was important enough, or good enough, or credible enough to take that information and send it to the redistricting committee so that we could all consider that. Or to send it to me, the chair, and say, "Hey, Mr. Chairman, these are important, these are things we find to be valuable and important, please consider them. You may not include them, but what does everybody in this chamber know? If they're not at least communicated, there's no opportunity to include them." So it begs the question, just as it did before, are we talking about real information that the Democrats... the Democrats think really ought to be included? Or are we just trying to play a game to create the optics of somehow our process is deficient? You figured it out, you know what it is. And then we heard some comments, quite frankly, I think it was the senator from the 42nd that I agree with, comments about, you know, this is the people's house, that none of these seats belong to us. I absolutely agree with that. These seats don't belong to us. We just have the honor of representing the folks back home that live in the district with a number that's on our desk. But you know, interestingly, the Democrats are asking for a process to protect incumbents. We heard the senator from the 6th say, the Republicans are trying to eliminate her seat. And all of the other comments that were said suggestive that what we should have done were to have protected certain people. Of course, the ones they're talking about are Democrat incumbents, but it's to protect someone. Folks, that's not what this process is about. It's not about the person in the seat right now because whoever it is won't be there very long. It's about making sure of the fair, legal, proper process for the voters that live in that district to choose. You can't have it both ways. You can't say that this belongs, that the seats don't belong to us, and at the same time say, but wait a minute, you ought to be protecting the senator or the House member in Congress from the 6th or pick any other district. You can't have it both ways. And of course, we had to have it because the press is here today, and I'm glad they are, somebody had to say voter suppression, y'all just can't help yourselves, with absolutely no rational relationship or connection between the maps we've got and anything to do with voter suppression. But it's an opportunity to try to say it. It's a tired old line that's just as fake and just as false now as it was back when we heard it in March when we were debating SB 202. Then we heard about, well, this is, this process has just not been transparent. Well, I can tell you, I don't know if y'all do and the ones that are complaining, but I can tell you, there's over a thousand comments logged on the portal. Those were all printed off and reviewed by us. There are over 50 comments that were logged in after the September map that was published by the Republicans. We went through all of them. The comments about Jim Crow are just really, really disappointing. You know, if you want to live in the past, let's go back to 2001 and look at how y'all managed the process. But no, wait a minute, y'all don't want to do that. I've been told very pointedly, off the record, on the record, from the well, whoa, I'm tired of hearing about 2001. I know y'all are. Those maps are embarrassing to you. There's nothing new that's been added to the narrative today. All of these questions were answered in the committee hearings. I'm going to wrap up by, you know, we heard, and we heard some senators today that want to tout and are really proud of the Princeton Gerrymandering Project, which kind of is a funny name. Those fine folks in New Jersey didn't want to tell us how we ought to do what we're doing and want to give grades and want to give us bad grades. But you know, it's really hard to tell how they come about those grades and how did they figure those grades. So I did a little sort of informal grading around ourselves. While the Princeton folks don't give us an A, you know, the Rural Georgia Project, I don't know if y'all have heard of them, they give us an A-plus for the 11 hearings that we held. You know, Senator from the 53rd, the Chickamauga Contingency gives us an A-plus for contiguous districts. How about Senator from the 19th? I don't know if you know, but the Vidalia Onion Belt gives us an A-plus for not having multi-member districts. Senator from the 29th, the Warm Springs Warriors give us an A-plus for compactness. Senator from the 11th, the Good Folks and the Quail Country Citizens, they give us an A-plus for protecting communities of interest. Senator from the 50th, the Heroes of Habersham, they give us an A-plus for complying with the U.S. Constitution. And the final grade, my little hometown of Adrian, Georgia, where I grew up, of 800 people, Senator from the 23rd, they give us an A-plus, the Adrian Patriots give us an A-plus for complying with the Georgia Constitution. Those are the real grades. That's the map you've got. It's a good map. I ask that you vote for it. Thank you for your patience allowing me to present it, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. Mr. President, I yield the way.
Thank you, Senator. Question now is on the adoption of the committee substitute. Is there objection to adoption of the committee substitute? Chair hears none, and the committee substitute is adopted. Is there objection agreeing the report of the committee which is favorable to the passage of the bill? Chair hears none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Is there objection to the main question being ordered? The chair hears none, and the main question's ordered. Questions on the passage of the bill by substitute. All those in favor, vote yea. Opposed, nay. What purpose does the senator from the 36th rise? On the passage of the bill, the ayes are 32, the nays are 21. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed by substitute. Want to take a moment to thank the group that has worked with us the most throughout this entire process for all of us, Gina Wright and her entire team. Thank you so much for all your help and dedication to taking all of our meetings. For what purpose does, what purpose does the senator from the 36th rise?
Request to make a motion.
State your motion.
I'd like to move for unanimous consent to consider and to have read and adopted a privileged resolution that arrived late to the chamber.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read the caption?
Senate Resolution 58 EX by Senator James of the 35th, and others, a resolution honoring the life and memory of Michael Langford and for other purposes.
Senator from the 36th has asked for consideration to adopt. The resolution, is there objection? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes the majority leader. Chair recognizes the majority leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. on Monday, 22, November 2021 pursuant to Senate Resolution 48 EX.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
The Rules Committee meeting has been canceled. There are no other meetings scheduled today.
What's the Rules Chairman going to do with himself? Does any other senator wish to make an announcement? The chair sees none. The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Monday, November 20... Easy now. For what purpose does the majority leader rise? To make an announcement? Chair recognizes the majority leader to make an announcement.
We have no, there we got it. Hey, I just wanted to say real quick, thank you to the doorkeepers and security for, that came and hung with us during this entire special session. We couldn't do it without them. Thank you, guys.
Does the senator from the 35th wish to make an announcement from your desk?
Thank you, Mr. ... I'd like to, since for some reason my resolution for my mother's 91st birthday, which will be next week, did not come in and go through the process, I'd like to wish Mrs. Morrisine Thomas, who is a native Atlantan, and she's, she's still a beautiful woman and within her right mind, and she's very healthy, I want to wish her a happy 91st birthday.
Happy early birthday. The majority leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Monday, November 22, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oppose, no? The ayes have it. Senate stands adjourned. Have a great weekend.